I do apologize though, everybody. Okay. Sorry, we're on the Von Ryan Standard Time, which is five minutes late. I do apologize, I had to come just as I had to leave, so. Anyway, we want to welcome everybody here that's here with us this evening. We're here as a, this is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Roosevelt City Council. A notice of the agenda for this evening is, you'll see on the screens, that has also been placed on our building and on our website, also on the State's meeting website. And we again appreciate all of you being here. I apologize again for getting here late, but the prayer last time. It's John? Okay. I guess that means Ryan, would you be willing to pray for us this evening? And then when he gets through with the prayer, would you stand and follow me in the pledge of allegiance, please?
Heavenly Father, we are grateful to be here at the city council meeting. We are grateful for the city we live in, for the wonderful opportunities it provides. We are grateful for the residents and for the citizens that are here, for the process. We ask that they would please bless those here and those that will participate by viewing on video that they might be able to understand the process. We ask the council to be blessed in the decisions they make, that they might make the best decisions for the city, that they might be guided in their decisions. We ask that a blessing be given to the staff, the police, the fire, those that are working in the field, that they might be able to be protected as they serve. We say this through Jesus Christ, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We'd like to have a roll call now. Looks like we're fully represented, but for the record and for the audio, we'll go through that. Troy Rohr?
President.
Aspen White?
Here.
Joe Burdick?
Here.
Aaron White?
Here.
Albert Foster?
Here.
Thank you. Our next item is the minutes of our last meeting. This is October 3rd, 2017.
It's not a ridiculous.
No, I've got, I've got mine all mixed up tonight, so. Today is October 3rd, correct?
Yeah.
And what year is? Do we have any additions or corrections to the minutes? How many pages are there, Joe, because I've got?
Two pages of minute two.
Page one, page two? If not, I'd entertain a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
So moved.
Thank you. Councilman White, do we have a second?
Second.
Councilman White. Any other questions or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We'll get right into our appointments, as you can follow along on the agenda. The first one is Strata Airport Campus Subdivision Plaid Approval. There we go. I thought we'd get represented by Strata, thanks for being here, Dennis, we appreciate it.
Thank you for having me. We met with Planning and Zoning last week and presented our flat map for our future subdivision out adjacent to the airport. We're calling it the Strata Airport Campus Subdivision. It consists of ten lots. There are six lots that are about an acre and a half that are immediately adjacent to the airport. I'm trying to get my directions, maybe south of the airport. And then our agreement with the city at this point is to improve sixteen hundred... South?
Sixteen hundred.
Sixteen hundred from the point where it ends now over and continue that west until it connects with Airport Road. We will have a continuous sewer and water situation all the way across, make a loop, a loop continuous with Tree Thousand West. We anticipate dividing the rest of the property, there's thirty-two acres total in that, in that property, and we anticipate dividing the other twenty acres into four, five acre plots. And we have plans to build on lots seven and eight right away. We hope to start on the underground utilities yet this year. And then next year, we hope to be able to start on our building project. Our building project at this point will be three separate buildings. There will be a large warehouse facility to incorporate all of our warehousing that's now scattered around to two or three different locations. And then in between that building and a, and a large construction shop, we will have a little administration building right in between them. What we're trying to do is, is bring all of our managers into one central location so that they can have that communication with each other. And we'll bring the warehousing all into one central location so that we can control our, our inventory control better. And so, that's, that's our immediate plan. We hope to start that construction in the next fiscal year, probably April or May, somewhere in that period of time. We're still gathering information and trying to get bids on, on those facilities. But we would like the council to approve this subdivision map as it's currently designed. And we hope it will be a great addition to the city. We think there's a really great potential out there next to the airport for future business. Every time I go out there, I see one or two of them with Lear jets landing there. That indicates to me that there's opportunity for, for the city to grow and provide an area where new business can come into the city and have a presence adjacent to the airport.
Thank you, Dennis. Do you have any questions from the council?
Sounds like a good plan to me.
I'll second that there.
Was that a motion?
A motion that we approved the?
Pretty informal.
Submitted by Strata.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got, I don't, two seconds, you can count either one you want, Carolyn.
I took the one that was made after the official motion.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Thank you, we appreciate your presence in our community very much.
We love it here. Who wants it?
I guess. If I don't have Carolyn here to point at it, I'd have to look quite a bit.
Hers looks more official than yours, Mayor.
Yeah, she does a better job, not only on signatures. Now, what's the process from here?
They'll take it to recorder, tell me.
Okay.
Alright. Thanks very much.
Appreciate it. Our next item is safety sidewalk contract approval, Ryan? Oh, I'm sorry, I missed the Axia, Don Hamilton.
Just a couple, Don Hamilton is here with Axia. This property, right here, if you can see where it is, trying to give you the, the location of the airport if you come north. So then to zoom it in, is right here on this piece of property, right here. So they are looking at a, well, on the west, on the east half of this property, so over in this area. They have it permitted, they have it permitted through the state. And it was at that point, all the permits were available, that they needed were done. And, and they've had that since 2013, I believe. So at that point, it came as a, okay, when we rezoned, we rezoned all of the annexation that came in from the Stone Gate as an RR1. We didn't, we didn't necessarily know at that time that, that they were looking at it while as we had the first initial zoning, that's what got selected for all the parcels. Figuring that, you know, there's some residential to the, to the side here, this is the conover's place. And then there's industrial down below it. So it kind of right there in the, in the potential mix area. In order for it to go through a zoning change process, at that point, we would zone just these two parcels. Would have to zone them to the M2 zone and go through a conditional use process. That's the process that, that was begun. And, and that's the process that we took at Planning and Zoning. And during that time, we evaluated and, and the consideration of whether this was really a grandfathering of the use that they had permitted, they had authorized. They haven't gone here without that permitted use. And so at this point, the question came up of whether it's, whether it's through the process of rezon or the process of grandfathering that it would be accepted. Both those proposals and, and options were weighed by the Planning and Zoning. Planning and Zoning voted unanimously to recommend to the city council that a grandfathering be, be the consideration and to allow this through the grandfathering rather than actually going through a rezon process. So that's the, that's the recommendation of, of Planning and Zoning. Staff is fine going either way, whatever your recommendations are. We, we see value in, in both options. But at this point, as it was discussed through Planning and Zoning, they reaffirmed in the, in the recommendation.
What is the potential of, in that area, any other wells being proposed?
It's a good question. I think you asked me, Mike, do you think that, how close could another well be? And maybe talk about the, how big that well is and what, what you would see is happening there. My name's Don Hamilton, representing Axia. Thanks for having me tonight, Mayor, Council. This is proposed for horizontal wells. So there would not be another well for half mile, mile away. And that's on the east-west, on the north-south plane, it'd be like two miles away. So back five years ago, there would have been a well every forty acres in this area. But now with the horizontal drilling technology, we're consolidating down, our pad's a little bigger. But, so this will be just short of, it's like an eight acre pad, nine acre pad. But far less density of well sites.
My only reason for the question was if we had to go through this with another oil well down the road, then the rezoning would have to be done. So if that's not gonna be a problem in the future, then maybe there's not an issue.
Bill Barrett has a well right there, pretty close to it anyway.
This is the Bill Barrett well.
Oh, this is the Bill?
So Bill Barrett sold their South Altamont asset to Axia. So this well was originally permitted in 2013 by Bill Barrett Corp. Then Axia purchased it in 2016. We went back, started looking at the permits, and all of a sudden, it's, it's been annexed into Roosevelt City, so that's what brought us here tonight. Isn't there another well out there, another Bill Barrett well out there now, that existing one? Is this a new pad?
I think there's one.
This is a new pad and, yeah, if there is existing permits within this area, we actually rescind those to drill these wells, because we can't have the wells in.
There's multiple wells you can drill right there, isn't there? I saw it staked, yeah.
Correct, it is multiple wells. There is a, there is another pad that's farther north up to here. There's one to the east, just a corner as well.
Those are.
One where by Sterling Meadows. I think that's the closest one to this one. And, and it's been drilled. But just to further your question on the zoning, we stated in zoning that if this was a new proposed well site, it would have to go through zoning and it would have to be zoned an M2 with a conditional use. But we figured that this was a grandfathered use, like Ryan stated. It was permitted in 2013 with the state, it's continued to be permitted. They renewed in 2017 in March, and it's still valid. It was through Bill Barrett and then Axia bought the permit. And so we felt that it was fact that they had known it was going to be an access, they would have moved on the pad before. And the owner was quite adamant, you know, that he wanted to continue with the sale to Axia and all this. We felt that it was a pre-existing condition. When we annexed all that in, we pretty much told owners that it was pre-existing. We'd continue until he discontinued that for a year, and then it would lapse into whatever was on, just to explain to you how things were presented to zoning and what would happen in the future. But they have to get, get a permission to even do a well site with them, city of somebody proposed to do it with the state.
Is there an existing well there now?
No, sir.
Just, just has been permitted, no? I appreciate it's to the east end, not that it will probably even matter that much, but I was just thinking of the conovers and sound and that that goes on with drilling. They're clear over and across the street, but there's quite a bit of space there, it looks like. And where it's already been permitted, I don't see that there's any problem grandfathering. I'm just concerned about them, that they.
And Axia is actively drilling Cobble Hollow area out here on Ioka Road, nearby houses and stuff. I don't think there's been many complaints. I think it's been a pretty clean operation. I think Axia's a probably a model operator here for you, so.
And the county recently reduced their distance from almost about three hundred feet.
Yeah, three hundred feet now, but yeah, we won't, with the horizontal technology now, you're gonna see far less density of wells than you've seen in the past. The activity on the pad is, is bigger and a little more intense. But, but yeah, you're, rather than having thirty-two wells out there, you're gonna have one pad. Or thirty-two pads, you're gonna have one pad now. So that's kind of the answer to your question, is we're probably a one to thirty-two ratio. Don hasn't really proposed in the drill in this pad. Total build out on it could be eleven wells. So we have sized for eleven wells. Initially, we would do two wells and, and then come back and evaluate.
You might also tell if they do eleven, all of them are designed to go north, correct?
All of them go north, yeah. There was discussion whether they go onto the airport, these wells do not go onto the airport.
So everything to the north would be available for RR1 housing? We wouldn't have any well intrusions?
Any other questions? Thank you, Don, we appreciate that. Do we need to?
If there's a motion to allow grandfathering, or if you want to send it back, if you decide that it needs to go back to zoning, then we'd want that direction so that Planning and Zoning could, could take it on and evaluate again. So whichever direction you want to go, or however you want to.
One of your other direction, yeah.
I'd make the motion that we, we approve and grandfather it in.
Okay, thank you, Council. That was Troy. Do we have a second to that motion?
I'd second that motion.
Councilman White, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you.
Now, Ryan, would you like to talk about sidewalks?
I, I love sidewalks. I would love to talk about sidewalks. So what we have is, we've had a few residents come to talk, or at least there's been some talk about traffic and sidewalk, and pedestrian traffic between where the sidewalk ends by Palmer's Tire and State Street. And so, as we've looked, we've tried to identify ways that we could, we could achieve that. One of the other ones, there is Tri-County Health right here on the corner. They bought and, and that property, they have some traffic and they're saying, hey, we'd really like to be able to see a sidewalk put in here. They've written a support letter. We took it to UDOT in the off chance that there might be some funding. They indicated there was, that, that as far as that is concerned. And so, we presented a cost estimate that was put together by, by our engineer, one of our engineers. And, and we made an application to see what, what we could. They came back and said the, the grant, grant contribution match is a seventy-five, twenty-five. And so they've issued a contract to that extent. And so, we'd be looking at a contract with UDOT for them to pay seventy-five percent and us to pay twenty-five percent of the sidewalk to go through here. We have talked with, with Tri-County Health of their potentially contributing to that. So we're not sure of that. So, so at this point, your commitment and, and if that, if you were good with it, you'll commit to up to twenty-five percent. We always like to look to see if there's another way to, to help the city and keep the costs down for the city. We also have proposed, and at Planning and Zoning, we had proposed a, a new development here on the corner. They'll be coming, they got approved through Planning and Zoning, it's Burger King. They got approved through Planning and Zoning, and they weren't able to make it tonight, but they'll come with their site plan probably next council meeting. They do have a sidewalk through that area, so that might be another option for us is to use that as, as match towards the extent. Overall, what we'd like to see is to be able to take this sidewalk from, from the, where it ends there at Palmer's Tire and take it all the way to the cemetery, so that we can link it into the cemetery. As the, as the city's grown, we've grown farther to the west over the years, and sidewalks haven't necessarily kept up with that. We do have and, and looked at, at other phases to the project. At this point, we're working on the south, but the, the next set of phases would be on the north and trying to work so that we have sidewalks on both sides of Highway forty. This funding is only for sidewalks along State Road. So through us, it's only along Highway forty or 121. Mostly 121 has sidewalks, and so we're looking at areas that are, are in. So at this point, the phase is this, and that's what we're, that's what we're looking at and we'd like to know whether you'd be willing to put in the twenty-five percent if it's matched seventy-five percent with the state.
Mayor, what's the, what, what do we expect dollar value on the twenty-five?
Oh. So the twenty-five, we expect the project total cost to be a hundred, about a hundred and three thousand. And so the city match, the city cost would be twenty-five thousand, about twenty-five thousand, seven hundred.
And where would we take that from the budget?
So we have some sidewalk fund money, but it would be a capital expenditure with.
What, what, what piece does Burger King or the development going there fit into that? Do they already plan on putting the?
They already plan on putting the sidewalk.
So is the, the dollar cost you're saying exclude that amount? So really, we may not pay anything if that's twenty-five percent of the?
Who would like to see? That would be our hope. It would be our hope that we could use that.
If they're already planning to put it in there and that's twenty-five percent of the sidewalk, it's already done, and the state pays the rest, yes or no?
It's required if they're gonna develop that, that they have a sidewalk.
As long as the state will accept that as, as a match, then, and, and they actually do. They, we had lots of talk, people wanted to do lots of things and some can pass and something. So if they, if it does.
That's the best case scenario.
That's best case, yeah. Best case, best case would be is Burger King puts in theirs, Tri-County contributes a little bit and we, we get the whole stretch done and with little bit of cost from us. And maybe it's a, a split in a few different ways. But worst case would be the twenty-six, seven, and we would take it out of the capital projects.
Councilman White?
I'd, I'd make a motion, I think it'd be silly for us not to approve the contract up to the twenty-five thousand dollar limit. Anything inside and out of courses for advantage and benefit, so I'll make that motion too.
Twenty-five seven, that's the, that's on here, right?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, any other discussion?
So, yeah, if it goes slightly over twenty-five thousand, then we don't accept it? Or you're saying twenty-five percent?
Twenty-five thousand according to that, twenty-five percent.
Twenty-five thousand.
If it's twenty-six, five, that doesn't matter to me.
Okay, alright, as long as we're not locked in at twenty-five thousand when the actual guns come in.
It's, it's our match, and then how we make that match.
Not just the twenty-five percent.
Yeah, the twenty-five percent is our match to it.
In one way or another.
Yeah, and so whether that's our own, you know, rideaways, or whether that's, however it is that, that works out, we're hopefully hopeful to get some from the county, from the Tri-County Health. We've talked to them, they've shown interest, it'll be some of their budget. And then we've talked briefly with Burger King, had a talk, gave great depths to them and how it would. But I think it'd benefit them from creating sidewalk all the way around, create safety for us. So, anyway, this is a stretch we felt we could, we could accomplish.
Well, am I not correct in the ordinance we passed for them to develop that law? They have to provide sidewalk.
It just depends on whether they actually know what they want to build. If they don't develop.
Yeah.
Could change a little too if the state says we won't accept Burger King's contribution.
But it will take the?
It'll take the? Lower the price anyway.
Right.
It'll be less. Yeah, you're right, you're right.
Does the city still own a chunk of that vacant area nearby Yaxx?
Here, that's where the sign is that we have. So we have some parcel here, Burger King has, well, is in the process here. And I think there might be some here that still is the Yaxx, so. But I believe that all of this is still in UDOT's right of way, so we'll have to confirm that.
Okay. Alright. So do we need a motion to approve the contract, right? If we're to that point?
I made it.
Yeah, we have a second and a, a motion and a second.
Yeah, we were just going over if anybody had any other questions or discussion.
Yeah.
So we have the motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passes. Our next item. We met a while ago, probably two months ago, and then again this past week with some of the leadership of the Duchenne County Water Conservancy District. And wanted to give you a little bit of an update of where we're at. As, I, I don't want to get too far into the past, but I, some of you are more aware of what's happened in the past than others. And so, wanted to give you an idea of the past and where we're at today. And Ryan can fill in wherever he needs to, on things that I. And Ryan can fill in wherever he needs to, things that I say. As you know, this project was proposed years ago, probably ten or twelve at least, twelve years ago. And has been worked on for a long time. At any rate, when it finally looked like it was coming to fruition and they started coming to Roosevelt City for our portion of the utilization of the water in the pipeline. And we are one of the substantial holders of the water in the pipeline. But they started working with us as a council and as a city. And one of the first priorities that we told them several times over and over again, and they don't dispute this. But we, one of our major concerns was that we have a need for water, but we have a much bigger need for it in the summer than we do in the winter. And as we tried to figure out how much water we were willing to commit to, we tried to work with them on saying, if we commit to this amount, then can we utilize the bulk of it in the summer and cut down in the winter? And I think we ended up, it was around seventy, thirty?
Something like that, I guess.
Anyway, that's not vital right now, but I think it was about seventy percent through the summer months and thirty percent through the winter. And of course, that isn't what they wanted. They would like to have continuous use and flow through that pipe. We realized that, but we realized that limited us as a city quite a bit on our usage. And so it went on through all the negotiating. And we ended up with that in the contract, that that's the way we would receive our water. The problem that we're having right now is that it's barely working and it has the potential to not work. And by that, I mean the Conservancy District right now says that if everybody demanded all of their water at the same time, that they couldn't supply it. And yet they still don't even have the maximum flow in the pipe bought up.
Right, the water should before the maximum flow.
And so they're stumbling and they're not demanding anything. But they're strongly concerned about the fact that their previous manager made some promises to get the whole contract done, just to make it happen. And we're the ones that are left to try to figure out how to make that work. And like I say, we have it in the contract legally. They're stuck to obey that contract. Their point to us is that in order to have the amount of water available to supply with us having a variable, is going to require them to go buy more water. And they're willing to do that, but they're very hesitant to do that because it's very expensive water now. And it'll raise everybody's rates. I don't know what to tell you number-wise. We can have them come back with more information at another date if we want. But I want to do, you guys, I'll be sure that you are aware that we have a couple of options now. We can tell the district, too bad, we signed a contract, you signed the contract. We want to be able to get our water the way we originally agreed to. That was important to us and that's what we want. Or we can say, let's do some tweaking to the contract, whatever we decide is acceptable, to see if we can avoid having to buy more expensive water and raise the rates. Those would be district-wide rates that would be raised, not just us.
Are these numbers what we would expect right off the bat to be pulling from their line in the summer and in the winter?
Good question. So if I might.
Go ahead.
So we have a situation that we can take. We've been able to be on the Victory Pipeline since the first of January, middle of January. And at that point, we have maxed the usage, the volume at about nine hundred and twenty-five gallons a minute. That's the max we've been able to draw out. And at that point, we reached that, they said, oh, we can't really give much more and we really couldn't take much more. The contract allows us to take one thousand three hundred and eighty-eight gallons a minute during the summer. But the system, the hydraulics of our system, at this point don't allow that. It could, and as growth happens, it probably will, you know, do that. The concern is that we want to have some consistent flow through the year because we don't want to have it stagnant and we don't want to, you know, we don't have to pull any in the winter. We could pull very, very little in the winter. But at that point, you get those winter months and you let that sit and have a two million gallon tank with no circulation and a line that goes all the way back to the next customer. That could be a lot of water just sitting. So they want us to flow some, have a minimum flow. We have that as, you know, reasonable on our side. So what we think would happen without a contract, we would think we'd probably use two to three hundred in the winter, eight to nine hundred gallons a minute in the summertime. And so we could fluctuate with inside of it. But the question comes is, we have a thousand acre feet to swallow and to take in the system. And currently, we've been on nine months and we've just reached six hundred. So at that point, we don't think we'll reach a thousand. So the next question comes is, if we're going to narrow the band of how much we could take, do we also adjust maybe the amount of acre feet we have? And maybe it's an addendum, just to change it for a little while, give them some time to be able to not have to buy right off. They're getting pressure from their funding agency to say, if you have a contractor provide this much, you have to have the water to provide it. But it's kind of, yeah, they have to provide it, but at this point, we don't have a mechanism to drink it all, to take all of that into our system. So some, we don't want to demand something we can't necessarily take. We want to be reasonable. But we also want future growth, and I think that was what was intended in the number. We don't want to fluctuate it. If we could have a consistent flow, to give you an idea of flow numbers, if we held consistent at three hundred gallons a minute, summer and winter both, all the way through the year, it's about five hundred acre feet. So if we could have a consistency, that would make it easy for us. That'd make it really easy for them. And at five hundred acre feet, that makes it an easy one.
That's half of what we committed.
Yeah, that's half, but we don't, we may get seven, eight, seven fifty. We may get that many acre feet. I don't expect we'd get a thousand this year. You know, things change, growth happens. We could easily get to a thousand and then the contract allows for us to take an extra five hundred. But in a short period of time, the question comes is, is do we reopen a contract or just an addendum? Because I think if we open a contract, it opens any item in the contract. Maybe that's what you want, maybe it isn't. But if we have an addendum, maybe we can just talk about a few little pieces in the contract to alleviate the contract in the short term. But long term, I think the contract is a fair thing for us and them. It's just in the short term, maybe for the next five years or something, three to five, then we can't take it. There's no point for us going out and requiring the district to acquire more water rights in order to provide us when we can't really take it. And I think that's kind of the quandary that we have. They're saying, yeah, we can provide it. But then we raise everybody's rates and it's a problem that we have. And they're addressing it to us because we have the biggest fluctuation difference in our contract. Other ones don't have that kind of fluctuation in their contracts. They've got to take a certain amount, you know. We have the biggest ability to fluctuate in our contract. Ours is way different that way. And that's what's causing the problem is because we have so much fluctuation ability. So I hope that helps.
And as I said, Mayor, Councilman Foster and I were here when that contract was put together. There are really good reasons for us to have that large fluctuation, for our need to keep water flowing through our wells up in Yola. With that though, I do feel like it's in the business to the city for us to open an addendum, the contract, and let's have some discussions and see where we can go on a short-term basis so that we can help them. Obviously, we're committed, we are the largest partner committed to the project, want to be successful. But we do need to, I think, reanalyze now that we have a little history of how much water we're using and look at it a little more in-depth of what can that, what should that ceiling be, what should that floor be?
Ryan, you mentioned that they would have a hard time delivering, maybe I misunderstood. Would they, there's not an issue of them delivering a thousand acre feet to Roosevelt through the current system, or is there? And if there is, then we need to get the figure of what is possible to deliver and have that be the ceiling until something is fixed, that they can.
So they could have potential, and that's, what we've asked their engineer to do. Mayor and I met with their engineer and said, come back with what's possible inside of your system. We understand that there's a problem and we can't take it that level and they can't provide it that level. Come back with a few options of what those ranges are that are possible. And we're waiting to hear back from them. So to answer that.
We're working on that.
I'm still waiting on their engineer to return that information we have.
No, I just thought that would be.
We could have their current director and the engineer come to council and hopefully answer any other questions if you so desire. They're willing to, I asked them if they would be, so.
I think Aaron's right. We need to be willing to add an addendum to the contract until we get it figured out what's possible and what makes sense, so.
And I think having them come, let's work with them. I think our city manager could work with them and get those, let's get the logistics put together, you know, the historicals and what their capabilities are, what our capabilities are. Let's have that ironed out.
Yeah.
And I think that if at some point they get enough to supply that and we have the need, we should have first right of increase, you know, first right of purchase.
Whatever we do, we don't want to give up the right to have that water delivered. But if we need to adjust it in short-term period, that's fine.
So they oversold the capacity?
Well, what really I think happened is the last manager sold by acre feet. And that was, that was a block of acre feet of water. It's not that they don't have the shares of water for acre feet, but it's gallons per minute. It's the volume and how fast it can be delivered that it got oversold, so.
It's more the capacity of the treatment plant.
It's more the capacity of how fast it can be delivered rather than the actual block of water. The water's there, it's the speed.
The pipe size.
So at that point, that's kind of the issue. The treatment plant could treat more, but they don't have the water rights to treat it at some of those. So it's not that there's not shares of water, it's they can't produce it at the peak level at that point. They can't, because they're buying it by acre feet of water in. So anyway.
Just talking about how quick they can treat that, just from the Central Utah Water side, and how fast they can treat the water, because those peak flows they're realizing are a problem, especially when they're treating five million gallons a day and then they're shutting it off to a million. One of the things that Central Utah is considering, or is at least in.
For those of you that don't know, JR serves on board with Central Utah Water. So he has some knowledge here for us, so listen up.
But they are currently discussing a potential project that they would put in a storage tank to mitigate some of those ebbs and flows with the water. So that it's not such a stress on that treatment plant to try to get that much water out and then drop off to nothing. And so that could potentially, I don't know what the pipeline can deliver gallons per minute, but as far as the peak times and the possibility for that plant to produce the water that we need would be mitigated through that.
Run off the storage.
So that proposed storage tank, is that something they're proposing to put close to the water treatment plant or?
That would be something that Central Utah would. And again, it's in the beginning stages, it's not, they think that they're, they're just talking about that. So that's one of the things they are addressed, they're aware of.
Thank you, thank you. The other thing that kind of concerned me was the numbers that, they wouldn't stick to any numbers, of course, because they don't know. But the numbers that were thrown out varied so drastically, in my mind.
On water purchase.
On water purchase costs, that, you know, one minute we're talking a hundred and thirty dollars, the next minute we're talking two sixty to two ninety. You know, that makes a dramatic difference in the cost of water. And we need to have them nail that down a little more securely so that we, in my opinion, so that we know more exactly. I realize they can't be held exact, but it's got to be able to be a lot closer than that, that's.
I mean, to give an idea, the other partners on it, they have a window of like six hundred and they can go up a hundred and twenty-five percent of their, to their peak. So they're limited on some of their peak. For us to go from zero to almost fourteen hundred gallons a minute, we have such a peaking issue that it's potential for us. But oftentimes, our system isn't peaking like oil field is peaking. So there's more peaking going on in other areas than we are. We, because we have a tank that feeds our system, that we're at the end of the line. So at that point, we have that storage. So the storage that JR's talking about is great for those that are upstream from us. But for ours, because it comes into that tank and feeds us out of there, that anytime a tank is added, it will reduce the peaking of those spots. So for us, peaking isn't as big of a deal. We can spike and dip in a day and the treatment plant won't fill it because that tank takes that away. And that's why the tank down the line or in other areas, the more tanks you have, the less peaking, because the tank will take care of that.
But it is, that was another question I had is the worry about just one day the demand for water through the treatment plant is ten times greater than the next day. They just don't have the ability to ramp it up and down that quickly. Or that's one of the issues. And then the other issue is the line that they installed big enough to deliver all the water that they promised to people.
I think the line is big enough, but it's having capacity in all the different sets that they go with that. It's when it spikes that causes the problem.
If everybody called for all their water at once, then it wouldn't work.
They're saying we can't do it. We can't, we can't put all of the water through. They can sell all the acre feet they've promised if it's consistent, but the peaking causes the problems.
You know, the municipalities are the constant, because we're projected. I mean, you can look at us in June, July, August. Usage is, it's relatively constant. It's when you have the valve going on with oil and gas production, it changes quickly. That's just the nature of it.
So that's mostly the peak.
That's the peak you've ever seen, yes. I mean, if they were looking at the districts on the residential use, very easy predict.
Right.
Do we need a motion, Mayor?
That's what I was just going to say.
I don't think we need a motion, because I think we're proceeding in that direction. Mayor and I met with them before, we're waiting for information. I think they want it and we want it to give you enough to where we're at, so that you're informed, so that you know, but I don't know.
We need a consensus as whether we have your authority or okay. It's probably a better word, to go ahead and look towards an addendum or trying to tie down prices and that a little bit better. And if they feel like they would like to come and explain more to you, do you, as a council, feel okay about that?
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay, everybody?
I believe that's right.
Okay?
Okay. So you wanted to come and present? Okay, so you wanted to come and present, or you want us to work with them on an addendum?
Yes.
Okay, we'll work with them first and then, and then after that. Then we get to, when we get to close, then we can have a comment.
Perfect.
All right, let's make it through.
Great, thank you, everyone. Noise ordinance discussion, Dustin, I think you had some concerns about this.
Well, this was, this was something brought up as I was visiting with people throughout the, the city. At least one in particular brought this issue up and said that they had some in the evenings, they, they have a, a new baby. Somebody on a motorcycle was consistently coming flying by their house loudly and fast and waking their baby up. So they were kind of upset, as young parents are when babies are supposed to be asleep and aren't. But, so that just, they wanted me to check and see what type of noise ordinance we had. And I knew coming into town on all different sides of town, you'd pass a, a sign that says there's an ordinance for big trucks not to use Jake brakes through town. And I wondered if we had something that addressed more than just that. And apparently, the ordinance that we have, that's all it addresses is Jake brakes on trucks. Now, in looking at that and looking at other noise ordinances, the big problem is, how do you measure? How do you prove that somebody is louder than they're supposed to be? In order to do that, you gotta spend a lot of money on equipment and stuff, and then it's still, you know, an issue.
So you gotta catch them in the act.
But, but you know, I'm sure you've had neighbors or other people complaining about dogs barking and things like that, and so I, I think it's reasonable to say there are nuisances that can occur that we should have the ability to have our neighbors, if they're being too loud, to, you know, police are called all the time. And they come and they knock on the door and they say, you guys need to quiet down. But how, how much of a, you know, regulation do we want to put on that? I don't know, I, I was just questioning, okay, do we have anything more than just big trucks? And then if we don't, then do we want to do something more? Or do we just kind of deal with it as it comes? And, and that's really all. I wasn't necessarily saying we have to do something, but I know other towns have ordinances that, that put limits on things and, and address certain types of issues. And that was just one that, that to me was something that's probably happens regular enough in any town that, that you might want to have some, some at least guidelines spelled out about noise and what's acceptable and what's not.
I think, you know, it's a good point to receive for me. Personally, I think that our disturbing the peace ordinance covers that. Because when you call a police officer for whatever reason, you know, whether it's a neighbor yelling or the dog barking or somebody being too loud outside, that takes care of it. I personally don't, in my opinion, would want to expand our noise, noise ordinance itself, because I think the noise ordinance itself is slated for that heavy truck traffic. It's my opinion.
JR, first, then we'll get to you.
I'm sorry, yeah, I know the rules, but just a comment, and I did get the email that was going through about some of this, and two things came to mind. One of them is speeding by, I mean, that concerns me as much or more than the noise. And if you reduce the speed, you reduce the noise. So if we were to enforce the speed limit that we currently have, I think you could address that issue with that. And the second thing is, my guess is somebody speeding through on a motorcycle at eleven o'clock at night, probably a minor. And there's a curfew ordinance that we have also that could be implemented. And so I think there's, we have the rules there to take care of the issue. I think the enforcement is probably grateful.
And that's, I think that's the thing, it's, you know, it's the, those are reactive measures, because you don't know until somebody calls.
How are you admitting that you're the guy that was riding the motorcycle?
You know, and, and, you know, we, we've got election season here, you know, and, and people know that I come and attend the meetings and they say, well, why don't you go tell them this, tell them that you're unhappy with some of the things that the city council does and doesn't do. And they tell me, why don't you tell them, I says, no, you come to the meeting. You tell them what you want. And they don't complain about something that the city did or didn't do. But they only waste an opinion every four years when the election comes up or, or one of that election cycle, so. But then back to the, the speed thing, we've got an issue right now, or it's out, anyway. Then there, there's exhibition comes under that same thing, you know, which if the speed limit is thirty miles an hour, twenty-five miles an hour. But if he's got the motorcycle in low gear and got it wrapped up to match him RPM, making a bunch of noise, he's within the speed limit. He's making a bunch of noise. And that comes with exhibition, as far as I can tell.
I just know that I would never want to like this. If you keep regulating everything, then it becomes too much. And up at my house, there's, they have roosters behind me. And I took it upon myself, and they're, I mean, they are loud, holy cow. But I took it upon myself, went over to him, talked to him about it and said, can we get some collars on those or something to, you know, because I guess they have some collars and stuff that you can put on them. That's how stuff should be handled, I don't want to make ordinances and make the bureaucracy bigger than it already is. So I would say, if I was them, I would, I'm no people, I would go ask him. Hey, can you, I mean, that's how stuff should be handled, me personally, that's how I feel. I don't, I don't want to create more and more and more. Then all of a sudden, now your police is more stressed out because they're, they're getting calls for this and that and that. So sometimes the lesson's probably more when people should learn how to handle some stuff on their own. My opinion.
Good points, that, that's, that's really true. When people are upset about something, they, that's the first thing that they say is, well, there should be a law against that. But as we discuss here, that's not always true. And I only bring this up because I told the people I would and I looked into it and that's what I found and, and.
I felt it's probably enough on the books already to take care of any kind of enforcement.
We have a noise ordinance for Jake brakes.
Send an email.
We have a disorderly conduct and we have a nuisance ordinance for the animals.
And you can't have roosters in the city, I know that, but it's but, you know, you can also work with your neighbors, so.
I agree, I don't think we need any more ordinances to where absolutely necessary.
We're looking for, if you have, if you want us to proceed to do anything, if not, then move on, so anyway, we just brought it.
It sounds to me like the enforcement of current ordinances would remedy the situation in most cases. So I, I don't necessarily think pursuing a addition to our noise ordinance would, would necessarily be the, the answer to the problem.
And some of that has to be, you know, contacted. You know, sometimes, sometimes we don't enforce, we don't know, because we don't know. And so yours was the first time I'd heard of a, of a noise problem at that point, so. Maybe, maybe they, maybe they just need to make sure that they're reporting it so that the police are aware and, and they can patrol out or.
I'm sure they're not going to hear it until it gets warm again.
Well, it's reality and I've had, in my experience as, as mayor, I've had several people, especially with dogs, calling me and saying, these dogs bark continuously, my wife has a heart problem or some condition and, and she can't even get to sleep, you know, because of these stupid dogs. And the police will go down there and, and the guy called me, one, the one guy that called me said, agreed. He said, you have the cops come, the dogs stop barking. So I guess we just need to leave the guy down there all the time, I don't know. But it's, it's something that you have to expect to work with, people. It's a legitimate concern to them, you have to know that. But it doesn't always make sense to add the ordinances.
The main concern brought up, even if you have the noise ordinance, how do you prove that they're being too loud?
Well, if they're on a motorcycle, it's pretty tough to, let's be honest, I mean, it's pretty tough to say your bike's too loud. I mean, that's.
So it takes a lot of expensive equipment and so you're, you're just causing yourself more headaches. They can catch them for, too fast, for sure.
But I would definitely say, I would go talk to them before I'd ever created ordinance.
One of the things about traffic, though, that's hard to do, you just have to hope they come by the next night and have the police sit.
Well, it'd be like, it'd be like, you know, if you, like where I live, right by the golf course, you can hear the lifelight. I mean, they can be pretty loud in that, but that's what, it's, sorry, it's lifelight.
Especially if he's coming for you.
Yeah, you don't mind it then.
Anyway, thanks for the discussion.
Well, thanks for bringing it up.
I just wanted to have that discussion and see what the thoughts were.
Something we need to be aware of and look for avenues to make it better all the time. Last thing I have on the actual agenda appointments is the extra mile day proclamation. Most of you are probably aware of this, we have it each year, have done for several years. And it doesn't require much other than we need to have your approval if we, if we have it distributed. It's just a, a, I'm not sure if it's just state or it's, I think it's national. But it's, you proclaim a day to recognize and appreciate people who go the extra mile. And if we're, any of us are honest with ourselves, we know that a community cannot operate and be successful without volunteerism and people stepping up and helping in various ways. And we're, at this point, unless you feel differently, we're not trying to pick any one or two or five or ten people. We're just expressing appreciation to everybody who tries to do that for the community. And, you know, if we can have your consensus on, on going ahead and proclaiming that, we will do so.
So move, Mayor.
Thank you.
With that, I might say one thing, you know, we do this year over year over year. I think it would be nice for us to pull a few people in on their meeting on the seventh and just recognize them for the good they do. And I don't care who it is. We've got a lot of different volunteers that do a lot of good things and I think that'd have a little more meaning to it, in my opinion.
I agree. You know, some really good people that do a lot for the city, for different organizations, whatever it is, you know. You know, we should recognize them.
Do you, do you want to try to do that this year?
I would like to do that, if we're gonna proclaim November first as extra mile day. And we have meeting on the seventh to bring a few of those folks in. I mean, our council folks, the ivory club does a lot for the city, just for the community in general. Our interfaith council has been mentioned in all these things, those are just a few, UBIC.
Well, you're meaning kind of our meet, regular meeting on the number seven.
Yeah, just have a little recognition for them, maybe a little something, we give them an appreciation of their service.
Good, good idea.
But, I mean, I don't want to name people because there's a hundred of them.
Oh, we might name some next year and, and a few more next year and go on.
So is, is there something like, we could give them from the city, you know, we brought them in, give them something, I don't know.
All right, fair enough.
Just a notch above what the voice counts.
What do you think of staff, Ryan? What do you think we could come up with something, or?
I'd have to think about what we have that would be there.
Well, we could even give them a, a dinner somewhere or something like that, rather than going and buying.
Even just a nice certificate of appreciation would be appropriate.
Yeah, it'd be nice to do for them, especially.
There, the school gives out their two hundred and two degree plaques like we have sitting in the lobby. Maybe it'd be nice to give a real built city extra mile plaque or something that they can, in their house, replace a business.
I think we should give them a puppy.
Sounds like it.
Bonus.
They're cute. Everybody loves them.
Easily just get it from the animal shelter, so yeah, it's a great idea.
Two birds, one stone. Let's call tomorrow and see how many people we need to recognize. Okay, well, we'll look into that, that's a good suggestion, does everybody feel okay about that?
Yes.
Did you have a vote on the motion to approve the?
Did we have a second, or you?
Put a second down there, I think councilor.
I'll second it if I didn't.
Okay, we have the motion, add a second, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, thank you. Purchase orders, I think, were passed down. Any questions on the purchase orders? Not entertain a motion to approve those as presented?
I'd make a motion there to approve those as presented, also I'd just to point out, if you look at the chip seal purchase order there, it's pretty tremendous, what we've been able to get accomplished this year by putting those joint efforts together, so. I appreciate the good work that's happening there with the city staff and getting that done. But that's just a comment to the purchase orders I motion to approve.
Thank you.
I'll second.
We have a motion second from Councilman Burdick, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll go to reports from standing committees. Before I do, Troy, did, did you have anything you needed to?
No, I was just, I'd been over on the project and off to the day and so I just stepped down to be your councilman.
Do you want to give the talk that you always have prepared in case you're called up in church?
I think you were supposed to consider one of the POs that are on there.
Okay, Parks and Recreation, Albert and Dustin, Albert, we'll start with you, anything?
I don't have anything to report there.
I don't either.
Justin, Capital Projects, Joe and Aaron, Joe?
I don't have anything.
I don't have anything new?
Well, we're moving right along, Finance and Audit, Troy?
I missed the meeting, I mean, I was, I mean, truly distraught that I didn't make it to the finance meeting, but.
You're still recovering from that?
Yeah, it is. Entertaining the best.
As we say every time, we appreciate the work that John and Ryan particularly do for us on our situation that way. UBIC and Red Mud run, I guess.
Nothing other than I would, when we talk less, I would insist that we recognize Chad Wardson as an extra mile.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Could you make up some kind of appreciation letter, Carolyn? We, we probably ought to bring it here to our next meeting and have everybody sign it, is that?
Yeah, I'm thinking for the seventh, when we have been on the seventh. He's just one that I think needs to be recognized, he has been such a stalwart and taking care of the city.
Would we need the letter if, I'm just thinking out loud here, what if we have him one of the recipients of the extra mile recognition and get his plaque?
That's what I'm thinking.
Along with others.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's my recommendation.
That might, that would save you from writing a specific letter, Carolyn. We'll just, we'll just have him be, we'll have him be one of the recipients that night of the, of the extra mile. And you won't have to write a letter because he'll get a plaque that night, if that's the case, okay? All right.
With that, Mayor, our next, our meeting's on the seventh, I wonder if we ought to move it to the eighth, so Carolyn can count votes.
But that's pretty stressful to have it moving on election day. We canceled our last one, not because of elections, it was just that.
Well, we could just count election votes the next week.
The other thing is, is we need a canvas, so if we moved it from the seventh to the fourteenth.
We have a, I think, is there a public carry scheduled for the seventh? What was the date that public carry?
I think the thirty-first would be a great day.
How spooky.
I wouldn't mind being away from the house that week.
Anyway, we probably need to meet the fourteenth anyway, because of the canvas we have.
But you can't, you can't, well, yeah, you could canvas.
Because that would be within.
So we just have a special meeting on the fourteenth, or we move council to that?
I think we might have something that, that's on the seventh. If so, we might need to alter the public hearing for that one, try to do that. Yeah, we just have to advertise it, change the date and advertise it again for another week. We could work on that one, that, it's a requirement of our bond hearing, on our bond process, we're trying to get everything in line. The public, couple of public hearings, people of this, it's a long process to hit money from D E Q, it's really hard, so.
So are we gonna meet on the seventh or the fourteenth?
We'll let you know on the seventh, we'll, we'll evaluate and try to see if we can't push everything to the fourteenth. Uh, but we'll let you know at the end of the year, but we'll probably need to at least plan on meeting on the fourteenth.
If you, if you have to meet on the seventh, I think you could if you just kept it real, real tight, you know, I could slip in for just a short period of time for just absolute necessities. Because I'm not the only one that's doing it, but.
Moving it was difficult for me, but I don't have to be here either. Oh, I don't, the court's here. I don't need to be a recipient.
But that's, that's working out.
Yeah, we'll work on that, if there, if, probably the fourteenth would be a, um, one we'd have to do because of the canvassing. Fourteenth or twenty first, I guess we could leave that one, but we'll get back with you on this.
All right, thank you. Uh, Dustin, beautification cleanup or Arts Council?
Um, I reported last time, the Fall Festival coming up, that's October the thirteenth at the Old Mill Park. Still advertised in the paper today, I, I see, so that's all that I'm aware of going on.
I have that going from three thirty to six, is that correct?
I think that's what it said in the paper.
We, we, the city is going to be there helping people to register to vote. Um, A T and T has gave us, they're gonna give us some iPads and some cellular data, so people can register online there. And then we're also going to be, um, people would like to bring donations for the animal shelter food or blankets and toys and things like that. I talked to Irene Hansen about it today already, and she's gonna adjust the newspaper ad, so, um, if you want to spread the word that. We're gonna be there to help get more people registered to vote and, um.
Good idea.
Collect donations for the shelter.
Thank you, Brenda. Appreciate that. Uh, Joe, Economic Development, Planning and Zoning?
Uh, I don't have anything, hasn't been covered.
Okay, thank you. Troy, Chamber of Commerce and Emergency Management?
Nothing to speak of, went to the meeting, were Ryan and I, and emergency meeting, nothing really, anything, it was, it's pretty short and sweet.
I have U Bag and Mosquito Abatement. Not much to report there either, we, we have continual meetings with U Bag. As most of you know, they've been evaluating and, uh, looking, uh, uh, review of the, the bus system and. A few questions were brought up that have been brought up in the past in the meeting that we held, but, uh. Everything's going on about as usual there, and we're towards the end of the, of the mosquito season. I think I reported last time, they have had a few cases of West Nile virus in horses, I think three or four. In Duchene County, they're mostly over towards Uniti County and in the southern part of our county. There was one up west of Roosevelt a few miles. But, uh, anyway, it's pretty much as usual at this point. Albert, anything from the airport?
Um, no, the, the, just that meeting in St. George, who's going to it, is that coming up in two weeks or something?
Yeah, I mean, it's in Moab, um, and it will be the nineteenth and twentieth. So, I mean, nineteenth and twentieth in Moab.
And how are we going to get that?
Is that an airport meeting?
That's an airport meeting, it is, um, a airport conference, airport operators conference, most of the airport managers throughout the state. Tell those from across the year, and, uh, kind of reviewing what the regulations are, what, um, recommendations for, um. For planning, for ordinances around the airport, so there's no height restrictions, or there's certain height restrictions on, on buildings, so you don't go into a problem. Um, you know, anyway, it's, it's kind of a, a conference to talk about how airports are going, what's new. Um, some of the things we've talked about in the past is how, um, you know, the problems with, with hangers getting loaded with things other than aircraft. So at that point, instead of a plane being in it, you know, they get that, what, what other areas do. They've talked about the Salt Lake International and what their, um, plan is for, for, uh, expansion there and that. So it's a, it's a wide range of, of topics from the things that each of those small municipalities and, and areas go through problems and. As big as the, what Salt Lake International's doing, so, so it's a wide, wide range of what, what topics are.
So would you like to just go on with your report from City Manager?
Sure, sure, you know, one of those, um, just to kind of show you. You know, we, we have, talking about the airport, um, so I hope this comes up. So, so I'll say the one. So one of the things here that we look at and, and we kind of, you know, refresh as we go. This is what is called an A L P for the, um, for the airport, so it's kind of the master plan of, of things. It's been the master plan for type in here, so I, not much change on it. So it just kind of shows and lays out what, uh, what there is. We currently have what's in gray, um, so we have the runway and we have the taxiway. But these are the teacup turnarounds on the ends, and then the parallel taxiway. So many places have a parallel, so that they're not, uh, when they're taking off, they're not taxiing back and then taking off. They, uh, they go down the taxiway and, uh, it could come that way. That way you have basically different lanes of traffic. So at this point, in our, in our proposed next funding cycle, we're looking at the parallel taxiway, um, on number two five. And, uh, so it's the parallel taxiway from, from the eight, from the eight foot here, um, down and then coming into the airport and then the turnaround. We're also looking to turn around on this side.
What's the proposed cost for that, just curious, is that six hundred thousand dollars, a million dollars, what is that?
About four million dollars.
Whoa.
Um, F A A pays ninety, ninety percent of it.
Oh, what a bargain.
Uh, state pays seven, and we pay three.
That's a much better bargain. One expensive piece of asphalt.
So, so if you get down to it, you know, at that point, um, and, uh, it, it.
We could probably get the rest out of bargain key.
So, so we're in, a couple hundred grand when it comes down to it in our piece.
What do we get from the state every year for our, for?
So, so there is a hundred thousand, a hundred and twenty thousand dollar, um, assessment that comes. And, uh, that is, it builds over time into a, into a, um, they call it. Entitlement funds, um, and we get a certain amount, and so.
We can use that.
We, we can use our entitlements, um, some of the, some of that has to be, we put some action, but we can use our entitlements for a lot of it. And so we, we will end up paying a, a lot smaller percentage, we won't pay the full four million.
That four million dollars, is that everything in yellow, or is that just from the hangers back to the east right now?
It's from here to here, that doesn't include this piece, or doesn't include this, or doesn't include any of this. So it is just the teacup turnaround and the taxiway to here, but the gray's already built, so at that point, that's the, that's the formula, so.
And generally, the funding cycle, how many years do we apply before we get recognized for those types of things?
We usually have to have it on for, uh, five years, so it's been on for a while. We would expect funding in the next two years, so we're getting, we're getting somewhat close. Uh, our entitlement spend was spent when we, when we did the, uh, the ramp and, and that, and so that's, that's been complete. You pay, so somebody you can borrow against, um, other people's entitlement, you can borrow theirs until your entitlement comes through and puts in, so. So we, we can look at some of that if, if others have some that they say, hey, we're not gonna use our entitlement. There's some borrowing and, and there's some factors there that we work out, so.
So are, the, the taxiway you're looking at right now is for takeoffs?
So the taxiway, you, you taxi the airplane down and then you take off on the runway.
But landing will still, if they go past the turn in the last step, turn around and come back.
Yeah, they pass.
Okay.
How difficult is for, for a large jet, we had a pretty large jet this year land there, how difficult is it for them to turn around? Because I'm sure they can't stop by the time they run by that.
I've never flown one, I'd love to try.
I'm wondering.
I'd like me to do some research, I'd, I'd love to, I'd love to find out.
They can turn around right there, okay too?
Not okay, but.
They do it? No, okay.
We'd like to videotape you trying, but not at our airport.
Thank you, that's just a couple of questions I had.
Anyway, just to kind of give you an idea of what the overall plan there is. Some of the things that, that are there, um, we've talked about things. I'm trying to give you different pieces. I'm trying to give you different pieces of a puzzle, a different one, so I don't have any finance stuff tonight, so. The chipping, the flushing, uh, I think it's sorted tonight, for today and, and, um, should continue on through the, through this week. And, uh, the drain line, uh, should be to eight hundred south on Thursday, and, uh, so we're making that, we'll have a road post there. At eight hundred south and state, because we're coming through the intersection, that'll be the tie in to the thirty-six inch line on both. From the west and from the north, um, so anyway, we'll, we'll have some work there. The high school is progressing, I don't know how many of you have, have had a chance to tour the high school. And, uh, you know, I, I got a chance to, to tour the high school this last couple of weeks, um, and, uh, so if you want to tour, they could pick up the range.
That's about how long it takes, it's two weeks.
Yeah, yeah. They say that it takes about a mile and a half on the, on, to, to, to see it, to see the area, it's a, it's a good mile and a half walk. So it's a big building. Just up to Yonkers on the hill there that we've talked about in the past, and we've had it through, um, they have Port of Foundation, and so they're making progress in, in their construction. The, uh, girls volleyball should start tomorrow, so our recreation program, and, um, at this point, they tell me, um, that it's double from last year. So we're having some, some good interest in, in the program. Junior jazz signups are starting, they're, they're underway, so if your kids are interested. The, uh, I don't know if you've been up to the new park, but the baseball diamonds, uh, we have cut them to the right size. Um, that grass kind of creeps in and we've gone through and cut that on to the field, um, looking better. But we are still hoping and looking for donations to help us to, to put the right type of dirt in. And, uh, and it is a special, special dirt we'd like to use, um, but it is a fairly costly amount and, and, uh, we are currently looking for donations. And we've sought those through some strategic letters, um, but we are working to try to make that better and, and, uh, but I think even the cut, cutout will be, um, will be better. And, and at least at that point, it's, it's official size, and if you haven't seen it, they did a very good job, I think.
Yeah, I noticed it looked really good, where they cut it back, because what happens is that dirt blows up and then over years, now you have a, a ramp the ball launches off of, so. It's actually, well done, I, I've noticed it.
I think they've done a good job, they're trying very hard to keep that up, and Dustin's doing a very good job of theirs, as he's taken on that role to, to lead at the, uh, um, at the park and.
Everybody said that, like, the baseball season, that it was better, the grass was shorter, more playable, and so, that's, uh, it's good stuff, headed in the right direction, for sure.
I hope so. Uh, swim team has started, and, uh, the high school is running a swim team, and so we're working with them, and, and as we've talked in the past, with how that financial will work.
Did we do any scholarships this year?
We haven't got any requests for scholarships at this point, but they're only after the first meeting or so, so it's, it's pretty new. We're, uh, we're still looking to see if, if some of those will be needed, um, but haven't gotten any requests at, at this particular time. But we're really new, we've only had the first week or so, so not, not in it too far. Understand that ballots are going out in the next, um, week or so, end of this week, for sure.
End of this week or beginning of next week?
So, anyway, water usage is down, um, but we're getting ready for winter. One thing that you ought to know is we expect to turn the water off on the sixteenth, so we're, we're looking. If you can give you an idea of that. So I've worked very hard with the auditors this, this past couple of weeks, and, uh, we believe our audit is, is nearly complete. Uh, we've got a draft, and, uh, we're just going through to, uh, to review the draft that's, that's there, and, uh, that should be ready probably for the next council meeting. So, anyway, uh, on that, another one, we've had, uh, we've had some, um, issues and, and, and concerns about our animal shelter. We, uh, we continue and we have maintained, um, that, uh, that we strive to be a no kill facility, so we're not, um, we, we want to rescue as many of the animals as possible. Uh, at this point, the only ones that are, are euthanized are, are ill and, uh, um, don't have the quality of life, and, and so, um, you know, at that point, it's unfortunate. And we don't, we don't see very many of those, and, um, anyway, so it has been something that's, that's come up, kind of wanted to give you an update. We do have a partnership with a, uh, with a rescue, so after the whole period of, of the city, um, we're able to, to utilize that, that relationship. And the, uh, and the rescue is a great operation that helps us to, to fulfill our goals and their goals of, of, uh, of having a, a, a no kill facility. That's our, that's what we're striving for, um, and, uh, on that, we're, we're working with, uh, the entities that are around. That utilize that service with Duchene County, with Ballard, Uniti County, Port Duchene, Knighton. We're working with each one of them, uh, and helping them to, uh, to pay the proportional share of, of how they're using it, so. So that it's, uh, as financially sound as we can, um, and, uh, and we're trying to make sure that, that, uh, we're keeping a good staff there. So, anyway, just kind of giving you an update, we're, we're striving to, to be good there. E- anyway, I, up for questions, if there's any, um, oh, oh, just a couple other ques, a couple other comments, just on my other notes here. Um, so that you're aware, um, I have been appointed, uh, to the Joint Highway Commission, and, uh, we met this last, uh, last week up in Brigham City. It is consisting of a county commissioner, or somebody representing the county commission, um, and somebody representing the city. Uh, two representatives from each of the regions throughout, um, throughout the state, and, and, uh, so I think that's a very good thing for, for the city to have a representative there, and that.
Who's with you from the county?
Uh, Ken, Burdick.
Very cool.
So, and that's region, region three, so at that point, to have two within the same county, because region three covers, uh, Prolo.
Big area.
Uniti County, Duchene County, it's a fairly large area, so, um, anyway, that's something, um, hopefully can, can help the city with and, and be able to be there for, for the city. Talked about a lot of regulations, um, one of the things that we talked about is funding sources, so State Street was funded through the Joint Highway Commission. So this would be the funding source for those kind of projects, um, so anyway, kind of give you an idea there. And we have, uh, resumed discussions with Johnson Waters, trying to, uh, come to conclusions with, with that, we did meet with them today. And, uh, and Mayor Ryan and Dustin met. We did meet with them today, um, and, uh, and Mayor and I and Dustin met with them. Um, I think we had a good discussion. We, uh, have a, a meeting to discuss in another couple of weeks to, to remeet, and, uh, kind of have a couple of things we're, we're both working on in each side, understanding where we're at.
One, one good thing that's gonna come out of this, I feel, is because they're represented and because we're represented, uh, those firms representing each side are pushing this along. Saying, before this has been tried and it's died somewhere along the road, and let's not let that happen this time, so.
Yeah, um, a couple of things, I, I think there's a, one item of negotiation that we ought to talk about in the closed session. And then if there's any questions about, um, any of the pending litigations, I noticed that there was a, a newspaper article about one of our, one of our, uh, litigations that's out there in the paper today. And, um, if you have questions in the joint, in, in the closed session about, about that litigation, we'd have to answer them. Those are the, um, those are the things we, we have, so, anyway.
I had one more item on number eight, subsection A, subsection one, chapter by chapter detailed review of C code. I'm, I'm thinking that with holidays and elections, we probably ought to put that off till the first of January.
Okay, yeah.
How, how much more of that do we have to go through?
You know what? I like, it's kind of a good, um, placeholder agenda item for, um, you know, it's one of those, if, if something like, um, the noise where it comes up. Says, okay, well, let's, let's evaluate, what is it, uh, section six, chap, chapter six or something? I'd have to look, which section.
You said that.
So, so we'd say, hey, all right, let, let's, let's evaluate, maybe there's a, maybe there's section six we want to review, maybe there's findings we ought to review. It's kind of one of those placeholders. It's just kind of generic enough that we can have a discussion. If there's any reaction, we'll move it up to, to, to a higher one. But at that point, you know, as we work through, there might be items that come up, but in a certain chapter, and we say, okay, well, let's review that chapter. We still have quite a few chapters to go through. Um, you know, the, the, the animal one, take, take for instance, it. So our ordinance, um, you know, has been there on the books for fifteen, twenty years, um, has three days for unlicensed and five days for licensed. The state at some point has brought in a five day at that point, and so we, we're kind of, you know, doing a five day, and that's kind of where we're at. But ordinance actually has three, five, and, uh, and it'd be nice maybe to say, okay, this ordinance, let's look in the chapter, let's review it, let's go through that chapter. I think with the other things, you know, some things that have been going on and different things, we haven't gotten all of those, but if there is a particular chapter, might be nice to pick that up, go through it. You know, another one is, is, is our beer laws, you know. I'll drink a lot of beer, um, but if I wanted to buy before ten o'clock, I couldn't buy in Roseville before ten o'clock. All, but all I have to do is go to Maverick in, in, um, Ballard, and I can.
How do you know that?
Oh, I know, I know that. I've had people come up and tell me that. But, uh, but at that point, is it, is it necessary? Is it a necessary law? We talk about necessary laws, and we say, okay, you know what? Maybe we ought to go through the chapter on, on, on liquors, and, and do we really care whether people buy it on their way out of town to, to, uh, to the lake or, or camping? If they're out and about now, uh, do, does it matter to the city if it's before ten o'clock, if they're taking it and carrying it? Uh, you know, at that point, some of those, because they can go to Ballard, and, and that's what's happening. If you go to, to Jubilee and, and try to purchase it before ten o'clock, they'll, they'll tell you no, but they'll send you Maverick. And, uh, so, anyway, I've got a couple of people telling me that. I've had personal experience, but I can tell you that's what's happened.
Coming up pretty well already.
But it's one of those, it's, it's just kind of chapter by chapter, hey, let, maybe we pick up a chapter, we, we got some time, let's work on something, maybe it's this one, maybe it's that one. It's kind of a placeholder for some of those kind of things to be able to, to have, and, um, at this point, we've just kind of left it on the agenda for a, for a placeholder discussion like this. So, anyway, that's what's there. We can take it off, we can do whatever you like, but, anyway, that's kind of what, what is difficult.
Okay.
Very good.
Anything else? Do we need to go into this closed session?
Closed session for just those two, two items, one, one negotiation and, um, and then the other, if there's any questions on, on pending litigation we have. Just to give you updates if there's a question, so.
We need a motion to go into a closed session to, for those items and then return to our regular open session.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Councilman Hart, you have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Councilman Roar. Now, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much, everyone, for being here.
Thanks.
Well, good evening, appreciate it. John, did you get your lunch yet? Must have been a huge one.
Mayor, I'm gonna have to leave in five minutes, so if I get up and leave, I have another appointment to get to. No, no, that's fine. I gotta go empty mine, too.
We'll go ahead and, uh, try to get started then as quick as you can. I, I don't know if you heard, Ryan, Dustin has to go to another appointment in about five minutes, so we'll, I may not.
I don't expect any questions on the, on the pending litigation, but if you have it open, then we'll, one, Bob West and, and the acres we talked about. And I think you'd probably best handle the closed session to tell you, here's the three options, what do you like? And if you have a particular one you like, we'll take it back and say, we like that one better than this one. Um, and so that's really what we're.
How's he been on that?
Uh, you know what? He's open, and he understands the values, but, uh, is a little reluctant, and we started it, we started asking for.
Fifteen acres.
Well acres, fifteen acres.
You might want to wait, because you're gonna have to repeat this in five minutes.
We started with, I think we started with twenty, went to thirty, we got to eighty, so.
He was, he was, uh, balking a little bit at eighty, but.
Yeah, he balked a little bit at eighty. I can't imagine why.
Could have gone to a hundred and twenty, he balks too much.
I think he was balking pretty hard at eighty, but.
Well, it's, we don't want to take advantage of him, but it's a big advantage to him, what we're doing out there, so it makes a lot of sense, but.